Review inappropriate agenda. We have two additions. David Fox, insurance department. And then I have the facilities. He's every minute. And the add of first on that collection service.
To approve the general meetings.
All in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, motion carries. Review of the June 14 regular meeting committee. All in favor? Anybody opposed? Okay, motion carries. Open to public comment. Is there any public comment at this time? So is David Fox zooming or is he? Okay, so we're gonna move on and we'll come back to him. So we'll go to the highway department. I missed good stuff, I'm sorry. Good stuff! Anyone else for good stuff? I'm excited that we're gonna have a fall festival. That's good stuff to me. Don't do it! Okay. Now, the highway department. I just have one question. Is John still mowing? Is he still mowing? Okay. Just because the East Street at that side of town hasn't been mowed. So I'm wondering if we own that section. Yeah.
Roadside.
Roadside. Okay. No problem. North Street Bridge update? Yes. I think we all get it. Yes. Anybody have any questions, comments on North Street Bridge? Okay, so... Traffic and parking ordinance. Where are we in this? I wasn't...
It appears to have been the revision, the... And I didn't change it since the last meeting. Because I wasn't sure what we resolved in the last meeting. I'm not sure. I know there was discussion on the items, but I don't think there's any motions or actions to change anything.
I think we did, we don't... Because it was... It was... It was in fact, from the previous meeting about the Park Street and with the school, we had a lot of discussions about the school. So I think we did clear up. Right. So that part there.
That's East Street and that's on there now.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can look at that.
So we're... So we're ju... The things that are changed are on this front sheet. Okay. So, nothing on the second page? Alright, is there any other discussion on the parking ordinance? Okay. Is it a parking ordinance question? High Street between TH22 and Pine Street? And... So we're on High Street. And it's saying, between intersection of Pine Street and High Street. And 200 feet north of the intersection on High Street and School Street.
School Street, so that's High Street.
Yeah.
Now, are we mixing up Church Street? Yeah, where does that end? Okay, so then we got it correct.
Yeah, map. Do we want a map? Let's get a map.
Something confusing, I mean this TH20 on my eye.
Yes, and the beginning of the ordinance does have, they're placing it like TH and Town Highway. But we're on the...
Saying, looking at it. I'm trying to pick the Pine Street, because I would picture this right from the, like below the Corrus, Corrus, right? All the way up high and then to that School Street.
Yeah. Where Pine Street stops above in the middle. Yeah, or above the U.
Right, right.
We're confusing, we're calling it High Street from Pine Street up. The way that we may could be, Pine and Church.
Church is below.
Church is also broader than that, so that's under even into.
Right. Okay. Okay.
So... Yeah. So it needs to say, where it says Pine Street, it needs to say Church Street. Pine and Church.
Or...
Well, it's just, it's not really, because Pine's in the map, there's just Church. Church goes all the way up to the T-bone.
Well, yeah. I don't want to block Church Street either. You?
Well, here's the bottom line. Objecting is one thing, but can an emergency vehicle get through there? It is blocking traffic. Those are more important than whether somebody can, you know, drive up, let you people off, and go park.
As long as everyone's parking on the same side of the street, you can fire it up through there.
I mean, it's only bad when they have to sail. Then it's wild. So, we need to clarify this Section 1A. Before we can pass it on.
I think he said East to Field, indeed.
Okay, East to Field, West Side.
East to Field Street is what we decided, or we just said?
So...
I think it's just the... Yeah.
That's what East on X Street.
So East, and that's F that we're talking about now, right? That needs to change? Here it is, I'm like, I've already lost mine. So I guess there's too many buttons. Alright, let's talk about A. Let's stick with A. So, A, we're talking about... Here's Pine Street.
Okay, I know, I was backwards, I was choosing, it's fine.
Yeah. So it's really Church Street, not Pine Street. So it should be TH21, High Street, between the intersection of Church Street.
Right.
Church and Pine.
Because Pine isn't part of that, it's Church. That's Church Street that connects to High Street. Correct.
Well, Pine Street ends where... 0049 and 0072. The junction of those two, that's where...
So this is wrong.
And actually, that is High Street, that goes all the way down to there.
Pine Street, that's the wrong street.
No, Pine Street is right here.
Yes. I see, that's what he said. Okay, so between School Street and Pine Street, because it's, it's... Read, read the top bit, very confusing.
200 feet north of School Street. I asked you 200. 200 feet is from Pine Street, which is the most, and then on the bottom of the map, the 200 feet in north of School Street.
Okay.
That's what you asked me to do.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright, that makes sense. So it is Pine Street.
Okay, so we're going from Pine, up Church Street, to High Street. You're not going to Church Street.
So does High start at Pine?
High starts at Pine.
Yeah, okay, so it's just from Pine to High.
Here.
About here.
That's what it says. I get it. Alright, so Stan is talking about going from 0077 up to 0033. About there. Somewhere about there. That's all High Street.
Yeah, that's in there. But we use here all the way up to the five, five. That's all High Street, yes. Well, 200 feet. So the beginning of 33 is what we're talking about. Yeah.
Do you... But it wasn't when you came and submitted for zoning on that daycare that you were to use your parking? Is that how I understand that? That when you... So... Alright, so we need to check with the planning commission on... Yes. Right, but so, part of the problem also has been that people picking up our parking, pointing the wrong direction and blocking other people's, as I recall from previous, and then blocking other people's driveways. So I know that those two were issues on that street.
I just asked that, you said yes. And then ever east?
Yes.
Okay. I understand that. Okay, so there's employees parking in the street.
Yes, for the two hours.
And, and they park in the street. If your parking area is too small. Is that what you're telling me?
It holds two cars.
Right, and then you four.
So that's who has no parking on either side?
It wasn't initially.
So, let me ask this. In the winter, there's following that occurs, how does that get filed if there's employees park on the street? I don't see anything on here. Okay, traffic on roads and highways. Requires employees to park in the driveway located on the north side of the house, and clients of the business to park in the driveway on the south side of the house. If street parking is required, then all parking shall be located on the east side of High Street and will be subject to all Town of Proctor parking laws and regulations. The business owner shall take care to make sure neighborhood, our neighbor driveways are not blocked.
So they can only park on one side of the street, down the same way, so you could go down High Street, park on the right hand side, correct? Is that what that's saying?
It says that, it initially says that all employees must be parked in the driveway, it says, north side of the house. Potitions require place to park in the driveway located on the north side of the house, and clients of the business to park in the driveway on the south side of the house. If street parking is required, then all parking shall be located on the east side of High Street and will be subject to all Town of Proctor parking laws and regulations. The business owner shall take care to make sure neighbors' driveways are not blocked.
So that says, yes, you can park on High Street. There's no law for that, so I'd say it says, yes, you can.
So how would you, what would you guys like to do? With one... Can I... Yeah, it's recording and it's a lot of background noise. So, what would you guys like to do on section A? Is there anything that we need to do, that we need to change it to the east side of the street?
Well, you can keep it as is, but I'm taking note here that parking is allowed, because it's on the east side of the streets, so...
Okay, so... Why, I, I don't know what the point of that would be, because then when the sheriff goes, because there's a parking problem, it says that there is no parking, but there is parking.
If we are allowing parking, I think, uh, I think we should move it up to your Church Street and High Street. You're talking about halfway, and it's not taken off?
Yes.
So, the east side of the street is gonna be 66 and 72. Yes, right, the east side of the road, Church Street means High Street, which would be...
So you're talking about no parking from 66 to 33?
I think I did those confused pictures.
Exactly.
Well, I'm just using those numbers for, for my... We're talking about intersection Church to however many feet passing intersection of School? Yes.
But I was, I think, I was just focusing on High Street right now, so if people drive, if people went up to daycare, went down Pine Street, right? And up High Street, that way, they could park 72 to 66. That's what we decided once before in the meeting, alright, so why don't we just keep it that?
So they can park on Pine from...
72 to 66.
Well, from the intersection Pine, then you can use that feature. Right, the 132. Because that's where the driveway into that property. So the driveway there, in that corner. So the intersection of Pine, you're... Yeah.
Right.
So that corner.
So you're, but why, we don't need to have that, it'd be easier to say, because they know we park right there, right? I mean, if we, I just feel like if we already said, okay, this is where we're not parking, we say, okay, not parking.
So, let me ask this. How many kids are at that center, that part of the center?
So on any given day, our department, what want to do? What I'm gonna say?
Yes.
I'd say we, we will be deciding for, we want to change it. And there's no blocked drivers, yeah?
Sheriff is right here.
Alright, so... I have a headache over A. So... It would be from the intersection of Church to 200 feet north of School, correct? Have I got that?
39 to 32.
So, intersection of Church to Pine to 230, 4 miles.
Correct. I also... I, I think we need to put that cars that park for this daycare need to be facing north in the direction of traffic.
I think that's where we're walking.
But I, I, you know, just so that we're clear, it's beside the half the face north, so if your parent has to come down Pine Street, you're not allowed to park. That's what they need to do. Instead of coming in, that, or somebody's around, they try to speed here. Went around Pine Street, didn't bug any neighbors, and then you have parking. Alright, so then on letter F, it's supposed to be, is that East Street to Field Street?
Yep.
Okay, so that's the correction that... I'm trying to figure out what F means. F says, East Street between intersection of Main Street and East Street and Williams Street. So that's East to Field. Correct? Yes, but I think it has still, I think it still has to be in the ordinance. I'm not positive, but... Correct? Alright, so if there's no parking signs and it's not in our ordinance, can they still be ticketed? Okay, so even though there's no parking signs there, it has to be in the ordinance, state... Okay, so even though there's no parking signs there, it has to be in the ordinance, stating directly. Okay. All right, anything else on this little piece of paper?
Somewhere along the field.
Yeah, William.
So east to Williams.
Yes.
Okay, east to Williams. Yeah, exactly, almost like this.
Within the Williams, which Williams Street, you're right.
I still know which further one, the first one out, but.
So.
Would be the north.
North.
Yes.
Or if you put Field Street, it might simplify.
Yes, that's what I'm saying, east to field.
Let's see that through the field.
East to field. All right, does anyone have anything else on this? All right, so. Let's submit the changes and let's make a. A date, we need to have a public hearing next, correct? Me, a public meeting next, let's make a date for this public meeting, I'm ready to move on this. All right, so can the public meeting be at a regularly scheduled?
Oh, yeah.
All right, so. Today's the twenty-eighth, July would be the twelfth or the twenty-sixth, correct? So. So does the twelve work? Yeah, it's two weeks. How many, how long do you have to warn?
This is a public meeting, so.
No, public meeting. So.
So I said twelve.
So seven, twelve will be the public meeting regarding the parking ordinance. All right. Do we need any other discussion on the parking ordinance?
Absolutely not.
All right, thank you. All right, is there any other new or old business for highway? Actually, let's go back to guests. If you don't mind, is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
All right, so is there any? Okay. So we have the Sheriff's Department here to discuss contracts. And concerns. So I'm just gonna like rip the Band-Aid right off, right from the beginning. Um, there is a lot of local concern about the spread of break-ins that are happening right now and what our coverage looks like and. There's also a lot of speeding in town, it's excessive, and I believe about a month ago, we asked to have more speeding tickets issued and that hasn't occurred. And maybe we need to move that speed sign around town and not just leave it where it is. I think sometimes people forget.
Is it working? Mine doesn't work.
Yeah, I haven't been out there, so I don't know, maybe it's moved on solvers, so maybe there was an issue with that, I'm not sure, but. I don't think Kevin checked it.
Do you have a contract for that?
No, Kevin Gino, he works for my department.
He works with Kevin Gino on the police.
What's that?
Works with Kevin Gino on the police.
I believe he wants that. He displaced it.
I don't know. Yeah, I'm on it.
Oh, he could have. I've got a very, we've got a black truck. You got your tape involved, see?
I speak back.
Yeah. Yeah, there was one place where it was reading faster than you did again, and I guess that.
You still gotta be on top of it. So even if you moved it around town, I, because we are having. Through three of a school, West Street, I mean, it's all over, the speeding in town. Excessive.
Yeah, I'll need to check with him on the park. We have a lot of towns in line that like the habits of work stuff, that are a bit detailed, so I'll check with him on the park.
So, you know, and that I also would like to address like. Speeding tickets. And. Coverage as far as break-ins and, you know, those are two of the main concerns right now as.
Break up your time out of the vehicle break-ins?
Well, I think it's spreading, it started in Marshall, they want them to have, and now we're doing the same things with Proctor.
I reported. Uh, on the thirteen, we haven't had any sex. I don't know anybody else.
Well, we're ready that, where do we want to start?
From the ground, better use those, maybe more than five.
We just had the five. On the thirteen. No one's home, and we have a place on the thing that they have, and that's just not all.
And were you in town on the thirteen?
Uh, I don't have a starter for.
Um, yes, you were in town, that's two hours in the afternoon.
The nearest that we can figure from what people thought, um. We had a timeframe of two to five AM that the car was down.
It's probably a day that's like. It's a Sunday, so that explains a lot.
Yeah, we were down at ten.
Yes. Yeah, and on this particular line, it says, if it's easy, one warning. What, T C one, warning sixty-five. For a five total of hundred and five dollars of insurance.
That's the mark, two.
So, and I do notice that we have a bunch of different names again.
Yeah, we have Bill.
And when that happens, our coverage isn't the same.
He doesn't belong to her.
That, Bill's.
Oh, Ben.
I know.
It's nice to see one officer spot parking that moves first.
Well, through the air conditions, though.
No.
So, very warm. Animal control.
Yes.
We've had a lot of, uh. Your new contract, because, Ben, um, what we had their own animal control.
Look at it, see what, um. I have twenty-one calls for animal, that's from July, twenty-three to May, twenty-two. So, four bites. Fifteen animal problems.
Did you say twenty-one calls?
Yeah.
Four bites?
Four, four animal bites, fifty animal problems if there are four, if there's animal bites, it's free.
And how many tickets?
I don't have a ticket, we'll lock here, but animal problem. I didn't have that.
Is that, yeah, but, so I'm assuming I guess that I'm those fifteen, ten were the same person? And, you know, I mean, you're talking like four, I was hoping, how much twenty?
Yeah, yeah, I guess I would probably, probably, but. I wouldn't say it's. I would like, a physical, physical problem, like.
I, I, you know, I, I really do want to kind of address that because here's the issue. When it's reported, and, and this is, we've had two dog hearings that were reported several times and got chopped up to neighbor issue. And they end, two of them, and it ended badly. And so now I know of two other issues going on in town where it's not taken seriously and we're just waiting for another, and, and something to happen. I don't understand what is, what is the problem here? If there is a loose dog in the state and in town and in an ordinance, but it seems like it doesn't matter, it doesn't follow, get followed, and. It seems like a lot of chances are given before there's a ticket.
If the animal is a loose animal problem, if the person complaining is like surprised to see her, if we don't see it, we can't issue a ticket. We drive on the road and see the animal loose at a point, like, but perhaps somebody calls in. Jim's dog was loose on the lawn or running down the street, and they don't want to provide any documentation because if our tickets get called before, the judge is gonna say. He got, observed this officer, and if they go, we did not, and if we don't have a person here that can testify to the fact, yeah, that's, that's the dogs, and they're all by this person. We're just gonna dismiss their, his name, but entertaining fact.
Yeah.
And we had run into a lot of problems where people didn't want to provide a statement as to who the dog was. I understand your frustration, but we don't have to follow, we don't, we don't have documentation.
I, I, I know at least one case, we have several documents, pictures, videos, and still that person's all dishonest.
I, I can't take the dog from under the leash, but I'm not telling you that there are people that just don't have issue with it. There's nothing we can do about people's dog, but we can issue the tickets out. Well, I'm just trying to get to the, if they're gonna have a bug loose, they're gonna have a bug loose. And I, and I don't have a number for the tickets. And I'm trying to explain to you why it's a question of, oh. We don't have a doctor, and I'm not saying that.
Listen to documentation, and officer Paul Stan, our opponent, was the.
And I don't want to say that the dog, or issue ticker, or issue ticker to the dog, I don't know, I can't.
He's got a.
Yeah.
I didn't say it. I didn't say it.
You're, you don't see.
Four bites to a dog.
And I.
Yeah, that's why I got that to reprove.
That is a picture, though. But that is a picture that's.
We didn't issue the tickets, and I'm not saying that the tickets weren't issued, I don't know the answer to that. As far as the dog, they look, unless we stand in the door yard and take them aside all the time, I don't, I don't know what you want us to do to protect the dogs from something that's wrong.
Like, if you know there's a problem with the dog, just like everything is saying, there's a problem speaking on S A S T, instead of the bottom, it's going to take ten people to try to buy it. That on John J Street, that a dog runs loose and has been repeated compared to the dog bite. Doesn't it just come on specific date that we, an officer, remember that going and hanging out at the pool or stopping and hanging out at the bar. Maybe from the smaller tower on that area. And based on the dog's appearance and what's happening, it didn't seem like that officers were directed in that direction.
Well, we have the issue, and I care for what street it was, with, I believe it was state and neighbor, we did redirect, we actually spent a lot of time in that area.
Because I asked.
Because you're flexible, right?
Because I asked.
You think we have a week? We have. No sound of science. Claire. And they have.
Yeah, they have a lot of ways to do it.
A lot more of our citizens. So we could be back this time, we could be back.
I can, I can see what they just issued was a fair, so.
So, I, I mean, and then I, I just have. You know, one of the other things that comes to me quite frequently is. The follow-up, the lack of follow-up, that somebody who has done, you know, done all, jumped through all the hoops that they're supposed to, and there's no follow-up. And to me, that, that's a problem, that's part of the case, it's not ended if there's, there's no follow-up, there's no, okay, we, we talked to that person or, okay.
We're still talking about the dog, right?
Dogs, people on people's porches, break-ins, there's no follow-up. Or maybe people just don't feel that there's any follow-up. That's, that's a complaint that is. Given to me quite frequently.
Do you have any questions?
I can get you some. So I guess the, the concern is, I think. Is. I don't know if it's not being taken seriously is the way I want to state it, or. That. People don't feel that we're getting proper coverage. I'm not really sure what, what the resolve of this is, or how to address the problems that we have that. You know, when something happens, there's never a sheriff in town, they're not in town, not going to be in town, so that's what's up behind this, like, the next day. So we gotta call a state trooper or do not. And my concern is that this is going to continue to happen and that citizens are going to take minds into their own case, that's where this is headed, in my opinion. And, and then we're gonna have a problem, because then you have citizens. Doing things that are probably. Not so good, you know, then people get hurt. So that's my concern is that. These things are escalating, escalating, escalating. There's no resolve, or people feel there's no resolve.
I mean, as far as the, the current incidents, though, I mean, I, like I said, we got five. Now, I. We have more, and I don't want to talk about, or they called someone here, I'm sure, but we have five on the woman. Now, I, you have more, and I don't want to talk about, or they called someone here, or a sheriff, but we have five on the woman. As far as the cars, open car, or, that. So. You know, that's, the thing with money, and the gift cards, and that, like, things. Are there other incidents where you kind of found, or, or any thefts, or things that have not, that were, or?
I'm not sure about the theft part, but people coming on people's porches, people trying people's doors. There's a particular person that this involves, and I think that the sheriff's department absolutely knows who this person is. I'm not sure, it's a matter of, nothing happens, so they can't do something, but it doesn't give people the feeling of safety. And I, I think that's, that's a problem, that people just don't feel safe, they make rough decisions. That get people hurt and get people in trouble. So that's my concern, as these things escalate.
Do you know if, if, like, the dogs, such, like, to.
I think they ended up having to talk with state trooper, because there was no terror.
Because it's at midnight, I mean, sometimes I feel like I live in a different town. Because I don't see a lot of these things happening, people complaining. I feel like I still live in a town that's great, where a lot of stuff doesn't happen. I sat on my front porch where a dog was running loose, and the sheriff's gone by, the foreign brain stopped, pick up the dog, you know, because he's like, I don't think he's on the porch, and riding on his side. Those are the things you don't, you hear about the ones that are, oh, we, oh, well, well, how, and we want coverage at the intersection, we want coverage at the school, we want coverage over here, we want, we want the dog, you know, dog bites, and stuff. There's one sheriff, and they're here forty hours a week, they're not here twenty-four seven. And so I just have a hard time, I get that people get worried and concerned and complain. But I feel like they know what their job is at times, and I feel like everyone's complaint rises to the top and becomes the biggest concern, you know? And I think, yeah, bring problems together, but I feel like sometimes we just attack the sheriff's department, rather than trying to come to a solution or a resolution. On how do we get things better, which we're really needing to do. They're not gonna be here from midnight to five in the morning today, if we don't break it, because then you want to hear the school, because you're going to school, you know? So how do we reach that happy medium, so that, you know, everyone does feel like they're protected, but we're not, you know, we're working together, instead of just trying to find length?
And that's what I'm trying to do, I'm trying to get to, I'm trying to come up with a solution that works for them and for us, because this is our option. That is it, but it, it. You don't express, if I don't tell you what people are upset about and, and what's going on, you don't know, and you can't address it. And if he doesn't tell us what he needs, then we can't address that part. So this isn't meant as, like, an attack, this is kind of like, how can we find a solution that gives us the, the, the most safety? Because I want to live in a town where other people also feel safe, and not everybody feels safe. I mean, I feel okay, but, you know, things are happening, and you have to acknowledge that they are. And how do we approach that? And how do we work together to make that happen?
I think part of the, what, what helped me, I guess, is, is property, and I don't know what the reason is, but a lot of the townspeople come to the public work floor. And there's something extra that, and maybe they just catch you outside, or they see you downtown, or some place in the store, and they let you know about it. Common, because if I'm waiting for a meeting like this, and hear about always saying to have, you know, suspicious complaint, or yes, we had a comment or something, I don't know that. And now, it's, it's like a problem, I can't, like, you know, I, I didn't feel like this, so this is a problem, or maybe you want me to shift, go for five in the morning. If, if I have that knowledge, I can make the adjustment before we get to a point of, you know, we've got a, a big issue, where people in town are happy about this going on. To try to turn it around in, you know, a month or two is, is a hard task to take on. So, like I said, you, you guys hear a lot, I mean, a lot of the work that we're here doing. And it's, then I get a bad meeting, or sometimes they don't help at all, or they don't, they don't let me know, or the schedule or all, you know, because they get dragged out or something else, and they care about it. Sam can email me, everybody can email, and they're calling me, and that's fine, but I'd rather know when it's happening, rather than find out. A month, or two weeks, or three months out the door, that this will be a problem, and we need some attention.
You know, and I've been trying to make sure that, hey, Stan, I heard this, can you get in touch with the sheriff? Instead of having everybody on the board call, I just try to, tell them, did you talk to Stan? Okay, I'll let Stan know. And I go from that, but I still have to, I still have to hear it, and I still have to respond with some kind of concern, that, oh, I'm really sorry that. What can we do? So I'm just kind of. You know, I, I do know that how limited we are, I, I do understand that, and. You know, I'm not saying that it's a terrible job, I'm not saying any of that at all. I'm just trying to come up with, here are some issues that we're having, how can we resolve these issues? Yeah, trying to get out some work, it slows this speed down. Um, we did, trying to move that part around, because, you know what? People are just, and I'm not getting to it, because COVID happened, so a bit worse than it gets, and it's bad. Now hello, it's forty-five.
People were doing what they wanted to do, but since I was like, that's, somebody's boarding you over, basically, no. And, you know, everybody, everyone, we're simply, or, they're taking, spending that whole, if they got a plate, that's something dangerous, they've come out of. That has been taken off course now, so everything, trying to get back to the program, whatever. So it was a tough year for that, again, and people have, I agree with you, going to have it, maybe driving back to the dealership, because more. Hey, there's not many people on the road, you know, there's not a lot of traffic out here, so. Yeah, I mean, it's definitely a, a, a change that happens here.
Yeah, so I think just having that presence and, and getting the tickets for people, or, you know. Hey, I got a ticket today.
It's hard to write the day, because, because you want to be talking to that email. I'm sorry, but, it's something, you see, that I want to talk about.
I mean.
Out of the details, we're not sending, and stuff.
Right, and there's, like, times, we, I mean, they get a lot of times, it's, it's, you see me, or I'm going home, and I need to be the opposite of Bob, or a couple days, and putting your bags, don't want to run into a company.
If you can follow up, and, who, who, too, why, and.
Right, and, and they switch shifts, they kind of take over the one over, and try to continue with the rest of the, so. It's, it does make it a little difficult when people come to the town with their complaint, and then that puts the town in the middle man at that point, like, so. Since it comes to you, and they complain about something, and then Stan's always just waiting, now it's like, it came from. Person to the town, sheriff's department, and it's just, and I don't know how to get out of the. The circle of red, or, like, all right, have them call us directly, because that's gonna get the quickest response, as far as. The standard that they're got, or milk and sand for a couple days, or, because, get milk for a couple days, no, it's, uh, two, three, maybe one, or day, that don't pass. From the insurance or whatever the incident is.
So, you know, my response to that is gonna be. A lot of times when people call, they do not get the service from dispatch, or person averaging the phone, whatever you want to call them. Then they probably get, just an FYI.
You know, if that's what, I'm gonna tell me, because if there's a problem by dispatch, that's something that I need to address as well.
Because, you know, sometimes it doesn't get to the person, sometimes, oh, that. You know, that's not an emergency to them, so, no big deal.
Everything, every call that somebody places in dispatch, I'm gonna report it, like, if I can go back, it looks like a call that somebody made, and it's a dispatcher. And I wouldn't guess which one they've not been doing that, but, I know they all. Their job is not to screen calls, their job is to take a call, so whatever the issue is. We saw someone break into the car, that or something, they take the information down, and start a call, and it sends the office, it's not their job, we. Better out, what, we don't do it, we don't. I don't, we haven't just had a better thing that, like, we need a, a call, but. Because they don't want to be on the hook, if something happened, they would, they go, yeah, I got that call, but it started, they, they need to start the complaints, and issue nothing else.
If, uh, a call, I'm thinking, say, we sit for five, and, your officer, I'm doing it next morning, you get a copy of that.
We get, uh, mistakenly groundlocked, and they're calling the night four, and. Quite often, at least if it's not a unboying and resisting thing, well, say, we'll look for the sheriff's department, and they come out, shit. So there, dispatch, with the package that we're guarding, dispatch, and then therefore we get the call, and we have to go to town. If it's a urgent situation, but that's, that's, that's not, but it's.
That's what I'm hearing.
Yeah, we get the ground.
Yeah, it's hard to, for them to work the, a girl without, you know, names and, times.
Yeah, I mean, it, it does, it'll end up in a delay sometimes, you know, depending on how the information comes in.
What is this, like, uh, when people ask, and you come off through, like, they have one of those early things, speed lights, right there by the town office, that's easy to come in. What, what's the cost of something like that, regardless of any kinds of grants through the sheriff's department? Because it might even be beneficial, press out something like that, as you come off the freeway at the town hall, or, not necessarily the town hall, but right where the sign is. Twenty-five, and if that means you can wait out for it, or not to.
We don't, we don't have any grants to rush to that, like, Westmoreland, or not, maybe, but, school, and I believe they got some grant money for that, and. I don't even, they're, they're, yes, I don't, I don't think they're passing on the phone.
They're not, because Greg and I were working on that before Greg left.
Yeah, I obviously get a power to it, um, so it's, it's, have power. Some of them are solar. Westmoreland has solar for a while, and, like, it's effective, it's someone that's, hard way of getting out, but I don't think it's crazy.
You have a dog?
Yeah, it is a company, it's.
So.
Oh, just, or, or, what, what?
Yeah, they, they, maybe they're great through the schools as well, because I know they, they have the school, yeah. Which may be a lot from there, I know the kids get a site out there, and access it over, you know, radar, yeah, documentation on it, like, for.
Anybody do have any other questions, comments?
I, I think the only thing, the second issue is that, um, it's one of my favorite pieces, the second is right out, and I think people encounter this. Where it's that, and it's very closely grounded, so, you know, this fire break-in is a lot, and, and just, you know. That's what I'm thinking, and, and I know you feel, it's just, it's just a matter of.
Yeah, I mean, and I agree, this fire break-in, for the small town, people's property was violated, they feel violated. It's made world of social media, that type of stuff, crap like wildfire, uh, you can keep sharing votes, and it goes, 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 it's very quickly known, and a lot of people know about it at that point, so. And be, you know, it puts it in this world of lots of people's minds, and I agree, you know, if I, if it's falling away, somebody's power, or, your personal property. Yeah, you may be upset about it, and where you saw it, you guys still live, you know, even though maybe not with a stake in, or something, it's out of place. But still, your property violated, and you're violated.
So, so, where I was going with that, is the biggest thing I could cross, and, and it's just, Stan, is the more you share, and where your options are, the less, the more of the reasons you have. Because that kind of goes back to, if you can become, the first thing I'm interested in, I got here, but if I have to, you know, I just, it's just, it's just, because I have a, because you. Chairman's name, Dave. So, you know, I'm, I'm gonna share what's going on, that's meeting, if I have this information that I get between town and city, well, please use, and this is part of what we do. The S D officers. Stop her. What's the gentleman, dog, or?
Eric. Yes, thank you, I didn't.
Yeah?
Yes.
Yeah, no, I don't, I don't like to worry about that thing.
Oh, thank you, David.
I think so, you're providing, so you're gonna get back to us with how many dogs?
Tickets were issued.
Tickets were issued, if there would be any kind of rebate or for animal control. Right, that's what I think, we're just buying forty hours a week, and then, um. Do you have a patrol every now and then, I know it switches up, and I don't want to really say when you're gonna be here, because we are being recorded. But maybe every now and then, we need to throw in a Sunday night, since I, it feels to me that whomever did this little rash of break-ins knows what time on Sunday, in my opinion.
I think you're absolutely right.
They, they know.
They rock ups as much as we rock up, and they, they know when. So, yes, we don't get it through the morning, or if they want to through the morning, and they come for our, and, well, they.
Yep, so. Right.
And, so, they don't, right.
So maybe throwing that in every now and then might keep them guessing, I mean, I know proper's not like the, uh, up and coming midnight Sunday town. However.
Occasionally, you're right, people shake things off.
And I, I think that would make people feel a little bit safer that, hey, every now and then, we're gonna shake it off.
And then your animal, the phone's off, and I slowly found him, and I forget, that's all. On a case, if you didn't have it, like, whether it's an animal, if, that takes a lot of work, but to have it, that's. Like, I have to know if they want to, because, purple chart, that, the other thing, their tickets, so, it's, you buy, you know, it's, now. And we, we, we have enough. We were on, we were, we were, it looked like there are, there were. Yeah, I guess, if you pick your dog, or park them, so.
It seems like with three, the problem with those passive will be that, and that, that's been the connotation, especially here, it might be that. The tolerant, and the, and the, and the, and the, and the last point. Uh, it seems to be the connotation where others that were more, are, will be comfortable, tasking to, with, you know, at a time. So, I guess my question to you, is that something that particularly within the last two, three days?
I can't answer that, but not that I'm aware of, okay.
I, I can kind of answer one of that, because, hmm, a motorcycle, and it was supposed to be, and it came up. I thought it was going to be, and it was, I don't remember, so I'm not being sure. To ask myself another part, and she. When I got to honor that, like, I felt like, and there was a state where it's. Yeah. Well, and I was like, but the speed in town is a definite issue, and I would like to see that addressed as soon as possible.
Are you okay at last?
All of the, it's in town, it's form, it's pleasant, it's every streethead, that's all I hear, we even had some lady up by the school come in and complain about speed. So just, I think speed is something that I feel we need to address sooner than later.
I asked the group this time, they know that twenty-five hooks are.
Yes.
Because people think that speed there. They think the concept of, well, twenty-five is on the street. So I think that, uh, so the kind of.
Yes.
You got that speed, and the warning, too, is good to be on the last ten minutes about the past one. I, I know this problem. And it's gonna be here.
Yeah, I, I guess if it goes up there right now, I'd tell her.
If the making model of the tag would be the fourth, it's going to follow that up.
Making model?
Yes.
Little license plate number?
License plate number, oh, and model, well, five.
Yeah, I know about where it, I like to play with. You know what name was?
All right, thank you so much. You too. Okay. So. Hi, wait, I did think of something while I was sitting here. Bernie, um, can you ask? The. Project manager of North Street to please sign the detour, so people are not going down to the dead end and trying to turn around. Um, come, people are coming down to my end. And trying to turn around, it's really hard to turn around off my end of the dead end. And there ha, it, it's, they fall off, they, they're in bushes, they razzmatazz. Because they think that they're turning. And so go up. Yes, so. Yeah, for some reason, they're all coming up my end, it's very strange. Just. I, I, I woke up before and had a car sitting on two wheels on the front lawn. Yes. Backed a little too far, all right, so I will take the motion to move it to the Board of Water Commission, so. All in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay. Anybody have any questions on the water report?
Looking for. We will be watching.
Can we make sure we put that on the website and? Yes, they. Excellent, and. So, delinquent accounts, does anybody have anything on, on delinquent accounts, I wasn't at the last meeting when this was discussed?
We were gonna check, starting with the block. See. Whether shut offs needed, was some shit shut off. See. It looks like they added that, that last call on that, yeah. Yeah, the situation is, is that we will send out the delinquent notices. Usually, well, at the end of the year. And write down the list. They both have. Time to pay, or to make an arrangement. And it seems you're gonna be a lot of comfort on the arrangements. If you don't, if you don't turn a couple off, if you don't. The job is still picked away, and put it in, there's stuff, and we need to change. Okay, number two. Quite three properties. No date. What was that? What's it gonna cost us? We're gonna check on that, at least two, three.
So, Sam, now the top, because I think we went to the top ten. All those that do have first stop, and are delinquent, at least a year or two years, why, maybe you shut those off?
Because if you can notify them, they're gonna be shut off in thirty days, fifty months, maybe a day, or maybe nine. When did we send those notices out? The last time you did it. My last, it's a while. Okay, has it been a year, why can't we shut them off? We did a notice. Uh, two years, and sent out notices.
Yeah.
We haven't sent anything because of COVID.
So, the year before, when did we send them out? Last week?
Yeah, yeah.
Two thousand, two thousand nineteen.
So. When will, when will these notices be sent?
We don't, we don't. Yeah. After the Friday, first of July, so we have all of these, this is. We promise, this is the same, we promise.
So on July. On July twelfth, when we have a select board meeting, we're gonna get an update that we've shut off some of these, or that, that some. Yeah, they will. Thank you, notice is sent, oh. Let's go with that.
Now, don't remember, that's pretty good amount of money. Yeah, I was gonna chase that. Putting a hand on the clock. What's that? There's a second account under her name, too. This is actually, this is the. The firearm, this is the active one. The level of this is now, we're on them. You see, with that, we are so charged, because we have never verified that we have this network for the time system. They will, uh, say. That's a, you're right, one of the, yeah, I'm going on both of you. Okay, well, then, why would we leave them up? That's where, that's where, probably see this, probably not, but say, oh, paper. Thank you, so, my understanding is, she has not said, so she's got an answer. That's all the issue, but. As soon as I can get to see. And as soon as she was trying to. Put them out, let it, let it out. Get you in the class. He also put. Yeah, yeah, we are, much different than we were the last select board. So, it'd be difficult to do assisted, it's just like. I mean, I can't promise you a base of that. Work, or that, I'll be honest. Well, we didn't fight the concept, was it not the bias? By what you did with that. Yeah. You made that very clear. I know. So, we're gonna. The only thing, the only thing that worried me was that, I have two properties in this. Because they just walk away without putting a pay by a code, if they sold, it would not exist, everything in the code would be material, you know. And, so that's a direction, it depends on that. Yeah. So, just within the direction, I'm looking at. Properties that have a curb stop. That are not off at this point. If we want to do the top ten of those properties, we're going down to. Halfway down, London.
If we get the top, I don't know, the top ten that signs.
Top ten that, had to be shut off. You know, there's no. No. But, but they, my point is, if we want to check down, we would have to send notices to those ten, which would start with. On our list, on the four.
No. Oh, wait, yes, yes.
Number one is off.
Yes, yes.
So, turn over number four, I'm going down to London. That would want to, I just want to make it clear.
Right.
Not worry for the, this year's, we look at these, we want to leave something, which is not too long ago.
Right, and these, suddenly, we delinquent, a year before the COVID came, and they were, well, I noticed then, and we could have shut a couple of them down, two years ago. And we did. And now we're giving them thirty days, and they shouldn't shut out two years ago. Right?
They could have been shut off, we, we.
Right.
Whatever.
I know, but we. So, we, I have a agreement, they failed on you, for that, to shut off that weekend.
But, to. What I'm saying is, let's set out notices from number four to eleven. Sunday, three, about two and four, so. Seven, eight, nine, ten, these ten. Right now, starting off. And go them. Every day. Yeah. That's only ten months. Ten months, that's not it, that's not a big deal. And all, the one I served was thirteen.
I think I got.
Then, are you, what are your, was concerned last September, like, someone who did a, they did a thing that for twenty-five dollars a month?
Yeah.
So, is it, what are you based on, what they owe? Or, because they had the agreement to be back, like, some of them said, show that they owe like five thousand dollars, but they're paying twenty-five dollars a month, or fifty dollars a month, they think people were upset that that agreement doesn't fit, so.
So, so that, that's what I'm asking. Well, there's the law, so it's personal, again. Is it whatever we, everything, whatever we mutually, we, 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 um, the policy does in effect, at one point, uh. Intention, and you can see, you have a. Whatever happened, is that, is something that is not to be, or it's, and it's, especially not. With the idea of paying the third. Except, we'll keep this, recognize this, for, 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 for. So, what makes sense, if the legal must not be able to do this, to say that, if someone was entered, or if they have to be, they're full, well, how? Mommy, maybe that is. If it's not, if it's, if it's, if it's, if it's not, it has to come back to more, more, I'm sure. That's what we could be done with. Now, will you give it?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, you're right. I think, I, 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 I. My, my, that's what we're saying, is that, they, they, well, box. All right, yeah, I didn't say that.
Okay, any? New or old business? Okay, motion for sewage commissioners, go out of one into the other? All in favor? Anyone opposed? Okay, Board of Sewage Commissioners. Any questions on the operations report? We've covered delinquent accounts. Willow Street Pump Station Service Area.
This is the information that we. Those are new.
Oh. Thanks.
So, any other new or old business for the sewage commissioners?
Right, uh, except the motion. Go back.
Sure.
All in favor? Anyone opposed? Great.
Review and the bills and sign the spot where orders. You're going to be one thousand, twenty-four thousand, eight cents.
I'd like to correct, I'd like to correct that number. Because we did a bunch of them today. In order to figure this year, this year, rather than having material. That's a fair amount of free. It's the last, I think, I should, we hear another fourteen thousand, one hundred and four thirty-one. So, the total would be ninety, ninety-five thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight, thirty-nine.
Okay. And I think the, they're going around with those, anybody have any questions regarding that? I didn't see any questionable material. Hey, budget report?
Uh, this back in the, which is general, okay, we have, every time that they can save, one of the, a lot of them are transfers. That are from the concentration account, which we write paper check for. And we have to move that, moving back and forth in the, in the global record. So, these are memos that, uh, she has made, I have assigned. Uh, so if you look at the. Interest payments, the concentration account, it's earned interest, that she has to apply that, it is one of the various funds that are in the concentration account. You notice some bunny, the mouth, don't come out, and, guys, you, say, regular donations, is to be in the system, that could be collected for the, for the state. Sale blocks. The Senator Association, which is again, the separate check.
That was the last thing, too.
What's that?
That was the last, yeah. The journal, yeah, yeah.
Okay, but, are these positive or negative?
They're both, it's a moving, it's, it's a moving of money, so, um.
It's a positive or negative.
What it's saying is, here's a donation of a thousand dollars, and he's putting that money in this place.
What place is that?
So, there's one, okay, there's an example, Steve, Steve, that donation, she put it in the wrong account, she put it in the wrong account, so she has to do a general, I'd say, I'd have a cap for it.
So, it's, it's either just moving money.
Right. It, it, it's hard to audit her money, so that they see that it's moved. It's, it's both.
Bert said this all the time, I, there's no other, negative figure, doesn't say what account it came out of, what it came into.
Also, it's a, it's a, you know, it's a, yes, keep going, or, or to something, M R P, and it's, well, it's a word of tap.
That's correct.
And that's the expenditure.
Is that a positive or negative? I, I don't think that, no.
It's a great part that he's, he's reimbursed.
So, they're positives?
So, we received a break, he part of this item, we really received it, he likes to turn up and says, was five hundred two dollars, if the grand, five hundred six dollars. So, it's like a loss, there's not a positive or negative.
It's like, if you got a thousand dollars, would you check, say, you just take it out, put it up?
Well, that's a stomach.
Yeah, well, she just said it's over the pay.
Yes, yeah.
You know, more account, you look at, you know, it's.
Right, it's like, it, it was an error, a positive, or taken out.
She, right, well, we're probably, and there. I, I put that. This is very vague. You know, I, I understand the purpose of it, but it's. Very vague. This is something that you have to, really, yeah.
Yes.
It's not a, it's not, yes.
Yeah, well.
It's certainly a, a, just a few years. It's moving on.
All right.
Did you want to do community activities, since there was something?
No, I, 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 I. I thought we were supposed to only do that.
This week.
Okay.
The, I correctly, you've got a discussion, you can do that.
Okay. When? Okay, um, budget report?
I'm sorry, it's a thing, it's surplus, and all of the points for this year. So, I think there, to, 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 to.
Money only. Interest. Balance. So it's not.
So. I'm not as familiar with this one. Is this?
That's why I did. We received fifty thousand dollars.
Right, I'm.
One of these. You know. Equities. Don't consider. In this. Definition. Interest or. It is. To the. Right. Wasn't CDs was.
So how do we know that? I mean, what if? Somebody fills us out and asks for five thousand dollars, but we only have a hundred? How, how would we know? How do you know what's? Available? How do we know that? So every time it comes, we have to go call the bank and ask?
No.
Well. So every time you have to ask financial institution?
Yeah. No, this lady was nice enough to leave us some money. I don't think it's too much to ask.
So.
I don't think it's fair to spend your fifty thousand dollars.
Well, the bottom here. That email is not correct. Yes. So we'll definitely need to fix that. That's okay. Um, deadline. Let's, let's like fix these little things. After organization. Right.
I just. I didn't. Busy. What we do. At this people.
Correct. Does anybody else see anything that should change on this?
The other question, it doesn't ask, what's this sustainability project? Because that guy. Alright, that's a question that I think was asked.
I want to keep a simple. We'd like to get to cover. No, here is just. Know it exists. We're just doing that.
So. Organization, whatever can ask, can apply for this every year, the same organization?
Well, I wouldn't. One of the project or, you know, the reference could be applied year after year after year in search of the product. Full year after year, year.
Yeah, I, I don't care. I'm just asking questions just to get. This to know what, what your thought process is. Alright, so there is a motion on the floor. Cause.
Where to be taken?
I'm aware of this recreation.
Recreation.
Well, that's the way it's listed in particular where as of this thing as the fund. For me.
It's right here. She recommended that you sent on.
Right, I understand what it was created.
Did she say it's, I think it's changed the title, right?
Yeah, just make it safe. Yes. That way it's. Okay, so. Your motion to.
Change the title of the trust bond to that was the use of recreation.
Okay, and then something else, two other things. Revisions. Just so that we don't have topic about. Alright, so there's motion on the floor. Is there a second? All in favor? Anyone opposed? Passes. Talking recreation family registration for.
This is very follow up on the university. Important to be seen. For awareness. I think it's starting to be that. Stranded. And that's. The family. Listen to everybody.
Mm-hmm.
Senator, this is. Talk.
Right. I have a question on this process. Where are these papers being kept? And how do we know if somebody has done it or not?
They're being kept at the pool that's at the break. And these are supposed to be printed out index files, right?
But here's my problem with them being kept at the pool, a break. That's not really a safe place in there for liability.
Well, I mean, you have to be like, they're going to be there with them during the day, the records over. Allow possession of them. Because why would you fill this out if you don't have access to? Your child gets hurt at the pool, how do you, how contact? It's beyond his part. That was a, that was more the purpose of it than believing liability. It's just that it was asked to have something. Or, I mean, waiver. Expanded rate and the pool and stuff. So. You're, you're much know having waiver and also information.
Because the pool pass. That record to me is about at the town office. So there's no record to be on the pool pass at town office. So when they have the money, they just kept the money up there? Where's?
There's no money.
I, okay. Take this out in the past. Who kept the records for the pool pass? The first, the town clerk. And that's what I'm saying. This should be, this record should be with the town clerk. I actually, yes, I understand that. That's why I also suggested doing it visually so that it is available. And easy. And you don't have to have pieces of paper everywhere. But. Because. So. I mean, I understand what you're all saying and having it up there. I do. I just don't understand where the records are being kept. And to me, the record should be kept at the town office. So how does everybody have the information? So if something happens and a lawyer gets involved, then where does it keep the paper? How do you prove that this paper exists? Yeah, I, I, you know, I'm not saying. I'm just saying from that perspective and from a lawsuit perspective. Floating pieces of paper around is not effective. From that perspective. So that's why I'm asking, where are these going to be kept? How?
In any town, like if, look at the city, they may have a record, the recreation of each track of all the ways.
They have an office? They have an office?
Right, so. They have, they have a location. They could keep them there or they could bring them home at night. Or they could bring it here if they wanted.
A weekend.
Right, and that's why I was.
Pool. So, so where can you go? Let me just say stuff back. When I hear these two different.
Yes.
One is where versus not that people, if they're stating where they're at. And another is what we're embarrassed to be if it was done at the loss. So. That's not way obvious. What seems to make sense would be for. If you were told that somewhere where it's accessible to anybody who needs, whether it be our lawyer, whether it be. You translate the weather. It's a person. And generating that. Something that could be, that, that rank and something that could be at the pool or from this one, because multiple copy.
And that's.
Where's the last one somewhere? Oh, the original was all here, but. It's all the same. And then my next question.
Yeah, the title is, so you can't say that now. Started yet. So it's like, start it now. You just. If you want to hear the town, it's like, I have houses work. Then let it, it was like a photocopy, give it to the.
My, my next question is, is what happens to things like that? Is any?
Everybody's. And so saying when they start collecting these, that. Angela is, they can just sign, make a photocopy and leave the written. Alright, just keep them in a book. That book.
Yeah. I, I don't know why we're getting. I don't get.
We're taking. Position of here. Listening to you talk. Do you hear that? I don't.
This is a first question, so I still.
I, I just don't, I don't see why we have to ask this medical stuff. This is supposed to be just a simple waiver. And once we get involved in medical stuff. I mean, it's. What did the lawyer say? What did Alan say? I did the.
Yeah. City of there. Recreation. And in there, this is.
Yeah, because it's just supposed to be a simple waiver. I, I don't know. About asking. Medical questions.
I don't know why that was added in there. That was.
I, I don't think we need to get involved in that.
You know, take it out.
That's what I think. Yeah, just take that whole section. It's just a simple waiver.
We got the registration.
And take this, this pictures thing. I, you know, we're not a school or anything like that.
We're allowed. We have that.
Hi.
Me. You don't want.
I mean, how can you stop a parent, someone, somebody there from taking a picture? Okay. Just the committee? Okay. Right. I don't think so, because we should not be involved in. Their medical situation.
I don't think it's, I mean. I don't think it's hurting anything. I think her concern. Cool. Because this was, this was something created for the pool. And then it was like, well, if the pool's doing it, we should do it before, just to make it, you know. Um, but I think it's more that if my child was abused and they get stuck up at the pool, I might know. Your child has allergy. Should I be prepared for that? I think it's just being.
There, there's something to do with that position. Here. I think my time to protect, so probably the stuff important.
Yeah.
Well, you know, they're not going to do anything. I think.
But that's, that's the problem. You now have the implication. So. You're not going to do anything. What's the point of the entry? I'm not, I, I mean, I'm just saying, like.
Well, I, I just, I, I don't worry about anything. Parents that are overly protective want everything detailed.
So they, some people that are like saying, they want to, so. These, and I want to do this, and I want to do that.
And my guess is she thought, I'll call a parent. It's like, you gotta, just got stuck by the beginning. I know she's tired of like. Okay. That's the only reason I, I can think of. I can't, I don't, I don't know. I don't know how.
I think, I think this would be, I just. The parents said my child. And then they go to the snack bar or, you know.
Right.
We started with them. We had a fire.
Okay, well, that's a lot better.
These things was.
I just think that. Yeah, I think that that section is just.
And you can have.
It, it's calm, it's calling to parents, somebody else's child, when that, that's not the job.
Well, I mean, the legal system, they're going to.
Yes. Correct.
Maybe the whole number or anything like that, I didn't expect it. That they're going to be contacted. That's for.
Being intentional.
Yes.
Okay, it was raised by a select board and, and we weighed down and all this, and that's obvious. It was asked. So this is what we did. So if. That's a line. I have.
Should we have Beaver Pond?
I think that when, because Beaver Pond is only when we have a fishing gear. Or the ice, the winter carnival. When that happens, then we'll have to have one too. Hmm. This is having a town function at Beaver Pond. So Beaver Pond Committee. So. Right, we just have to have the same, we, we would just make it with just Beaver Pond on it when we did that. Correct. So. What's everybody's labor except with the edit? Correct.
Everything between ice cream and. I don't think that.
The two whole.
Yes. One. Right? Those three. Right.
Yeah.
If it goes up there, it's over the pool that's. Sixteen or whatever it is.
Well, the parents. Still have the five.
What do you like?
But right now. You said you're sixteen.
Yes.
I was saying, are we going to have a D until this?
Sorry.
Right, and that's why I suggest we do this digitally. Then everybody has access. There's not papers flying everywhere.
But I can use. I sixteen years old.
Yes. And that's why I'm saying doing it digitally, they can just, the parent could call your parent. Boom, done. You're talking about three pieces of paper. It's not environmental. Yeah.
Yeah, we're all, we're all on the same cookie. We open the pool, we send it to the passes, everybody could go.
Yes.
And now I'm saying, I've been going to the pool for ten days. But now I'm not in a while, my parents have decided this, you know, I have to be.
Yeah, they come up, grab one of these. You don't, you don't put aside, they don't come back.
They're, they're.
That was the question.
And that's why I was saying, if you did it digitally, they would just have to call home, get some, boom, boom, done. It's, how is that? We're in twenty twenty-one. Okay. Alright, let's go with that. Redone. With this.
Yes, whoever the directors are will bring the forms and sustain it and they can photocopy for their books. And they have the books to download. Yeah, or the director.
Alright, so I didn't get a motion.
Make a motion to approve the dialogue with the decision of everything from this, how they all reset.
Go on a second. Alright, all in favor?
I.
Anyone opposed? Zoning administration here. Do we have any of that? Other than we happen to add out for zoning administration? And so what are we going to do about the zoning in the meantime? Because apparently we have a building permit. Okay, perfect. And the planning commission. Did not suggest, other than the town manager, which we've already talked about.
Okay, one person. You, you. Tell them about the big pay.
Okay. Town managers first. So. We have especially, right, we can't say. We can't have action if, if this is actually made that during. So. The discussion involved. Four selected candidates. July six or maybe. And the entire select board will do the final interviews of the two candidates.
Beginning July sixth.
So I. That's, that's the. Letting the most.
No, it's just, just reporting.
That's where. And a patrol officer.
No response.
And that's going to be also an ad at Vermont Beach, correct? Okay. So the setting the tax and the water sewer rates, we need to create a special meeting. Um, Stan has suggested seven one. That does not work for me. I work until six P M. Will not get to town till seven.
Doesn't work for me. No.
Not next Monday. Monday's the fifth. No, it's not. Okay. Going fifth is the holiday.
On my roll.
Not, not my roll. I get Sunday.
I should have closed. Down my clothes.
That's our.
Well, that's the time because we're going to give a call.
Yeah.
So they may not be available.
So Stephanie. When's the earliest everybody can meet? It's Monday. Five? Can everybody meet at five?
One day.
Six. Six. Five. Share department contract. I don't know if we want to take it out of the contract. I would, yeah. And I think they may be back by that time. So I think we need in the contract support.
Yeah. No, and there isn't anybody else.
No, there's none.
No.
All in favor? Anyone opposed? Share the private report. I think we kind of.
Yeah, I hope they will step up.
Yes. Yeah.
The reason I think it picks up late is because we call it up a bill. So this will pick you up till you get ready. And I have a million, wasn't working. So especially these. There may be construction up there. There was an.
Alright, so. Other newer old business stock licenses.
All licenses.
Will we be having a list July twelfth of? Will that be prepared?
I mean, we put an announcement up in there. They have until September fifteenth for the dog license.
Now, why from September fifteen?
Yeah.
Yeah, I wouldn't tell them they have ninety days. Right, because. There's a lot of dogs that are not licensed or registered in town right now. A lot. Okay. And what about the tax savings that was given to the store? Are we recouping any of that? Is there anything that we can do about that?
We have not talked about the meeting, but we talked about it in the evening at that point. Because that's time as it is sold. And when we're being wired for the data and was participating in the agreement, I mean, still there. That's mine.
So the new owners, all they got to get looks left of the contract.
They agree to what's, what the agreement, which is five years and stay open for ten. So I'm going to three years left on the.
Yes, I understand. So you're saying the new owners will only get two years?
If they don't make those significant expenditure of funds to apply for a new.
I don't know why it would go with the new owners. Wouldn't it just stop with? Once it's sold to me, that contract's done.
Well, the contract means that the new owners have the. Continue.
They're no longer offering the same passing which they apply. For stabilization, but they still, the benefits cover.
They will not be, in it, coming, it's coming year, if they moved it last year. You're asking for a rebate. And what they saved last year. The last, since day one, since they are looking for a rebate. Since day one.
That's the weird.
Yes, it is. Yes.
Then, then you have to take that. To which assessment. So I guess my question would be where. Taxes go out or whatever, I think there's the little kicker. Who possibly be asking for the return, because they do not, there's obligations. The contracts are much better.
We know. All right, so you're going to discuss with Alan on that and get back to the board next meeting and, and Ben is not involving recusing himself in this situation. I just want to make that on the record, that that. Anyone opposed to that? All right, all in favor?